I was the remote control when I was a kid. Good evening and welcome to the August 12, 2025, meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notice of meetings been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act at the date, time, and location of the meeting or including the annual meeting schedule posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and filed in the office of the borough clerk. For those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any other relevant documents can be found on the borough's website attached to the meeting notice posted in the news and announcement section. During the meeting, an announcement made prior to the two public comment periods. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via tele- via computer, excuse me, will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon, and anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. For those in attendance in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. If you are eligible for Daniels Law, please just announce your name. Ms. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Spango?
Present.
Mr. Barty?
Here.
Mr. Brant?
Here.
Mrs. Parati?
Here.
Mr. Schroder?
Here.
Mrs. Trillo?
Here.
I mean, Mrs. Toly, sorry.
Here.
Mr. Trillo?
Please rise the flags, Luke. Pledge allegiance. The states of America and to the republic of which this stands, for a nation under God, indivisible, and veritable, and just as we are. We have two presentations tonight, or actually, we have three. We have one with the Roseland Police Foundation, we have one with Jersey Mikes, and we have one that was just added, and I'm actually going to bring up the one that was just added for a purpose. And I'm gonna bring her up. There's a young lady here named Maria Clemente Maresi. She's from Reimagine Mind, and she's here about mental health, and I think it's important that we bring her up beforehand. Mental health is something that's very important and is very important in the workplace, no matter what you are, but especially important, based on our second presentation, for our officer who suffered a horrible tragedy, the mental health of himself, his family, and his fellow officers that witnessed it and responded, including to the first responders, fire, first aid. So I think it'd be apropos, if she comes up first and speaks about her group, and then we'll go on to the second one. Right? And she might be a little more tired than the rest of us.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do, too. I didn't know it was gonna be such a crowd tonight, so this is nice. I'm Maria Clemente Maresi, as Mayor said. I'm a Roseland resident. I'm a mom of one, soon to be a mom of two. I'm the CEO of a mental health and wellness practice called Reimagine Mind Counseling and Consultation. We treat all sorts of mental health challenges. We focus a lot on women and their families. I'm also the co-founder of an organization called the Perinatal Resource Collaborative, and that supports the growth of businesses and practitioners within the perinatal space. And I'm also the president of a nonprofit called Reimagine Mind as well. Thank you, Gene, for letting me know about tonight and for inviting me to introduce myself. Being a part of a community is very important to me, and I'm not originally from the growth of Roseland, I'm originally from Monmouth County, so starting to get to understand the community is really important to me, especially as I start to grow my family here. One way that I'm intentionally trying to become more involved in the community is through co-hosting an inaugural West Essex Women's Wellness Mini Expo with the Roseland Public Library, and I also wanted to say a special thank you to Sandra Mickelson and Michael Pucci for being incredibly supportive as co-hosts while we plan and prepare the event. A lot of the work I involve myself in revolves around supporting women from before they get pregnant to the beautiful stages, but often challenging stages of motherhood. That's a big focus of this event. We're bringing local wellness vendors together to highlight their services that can be supportive to women and their families and moms of all sorts of types of services that could be helpful, whether it's from med the medical field to their own wellness and fitness as they get back into, you know, becoming a mom in a different stage of their lives. In addition, the women will get to socialize with each other and expand their villages, which is a huge theme of the event. The donations made by the wonderful vendors will go towards my nonprofit, and it's towards a 2026 effort to financially support women in with therapy who are pregnant and postpartum, who might not be able to afford the services that we offer but really do need them. The event will be at the Roseland Public Library on August 23. It's free to attend for the community. They, anybody could come from any time between 10:30 and 1:30. There'll be coffee, there'll be small snacks, and feel free to bring your little ones because we'll have some fun things for them, like face paint and a music class. You can register if you're interested in coming at the Roseland Public Library's website, and I really look forward to meeting whoever attends and building my community here at Roseland's. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Next, we have two presentations. I'm gonna bring up Matt from Jersey Mikes, and I'm gonna bring up Officer Miller's family. Come on up. As you know, our police department suffered, we all suffered a tragedy, and we're very happy, and I'm sure Mr. Miller can, wants to tell everybody about it, and he should. Our officer that is lucky to be alive and lucky to have mobility went home from a rehab, went out of a hospital and home from a rehab facility way earlier than anyone expected, and we're truly thankful for that and grateful. And I truly believe that, and I said it last time, that the support that Officer Miller got emotionally from our community and financially from our community assisted in helping him get there. It was really amazing, and it makes me proud of the community that we live in. Last week, on National Night Out, Jersey Mikes held a fundraiser where I believe if you donated $3, you got a free sub. They were able to raise a substantial amount of money for the Miller family. So tonight, we have Matt from Jersey Mikes here with us. He's gonna present a check to the Miller family. Matt, would you like to say anything? It's, Matt did this all on his own. Jersey Mikes is a great partner in our community. We like to support the businesses that support us, and that's exactly what they did, so we thanked them very much. Ryan?
Need to get off of this chair.
Thank you.
So next, we have another great organization that was started, what, maybe three or four years ago, to support our police department, both financially through fundraising and also through events that integrate the police department with the community. National Night Out, for example, was the doing of the Roseland Police Foundation, not the borough. We're thankful for them, we're thankful for their organization and their support. I'm gonna call up their board now. They're gonna bring up representatives from Franklin Steakhouse and discuss about a fundraiser that they did. Come on up, guys. Jack, Jack. Jack Gordon, the president of the Police Foundation, along with Tom O'Burn and William Johnson, members of the Police Foundation, and Frank Oliver from the Franklin Steakhouse. You may think he's from Nutley, but he's close to Roseland, so we're gonna keep him.
Not exactly Roseland, but close enough. Anyway, as the mayor said, my name is Jack Gordon. We're very proud to be supporting the police department in our town, and we are very relieved that P.O. Miller survived what would, for probably an older individual, have been a fatal accident, and we have taken steps to try to assist in any way that we can. And one of the ways that we have done that is to, if you will, amalgamate the donations that other police foundations and other forces have sent to us, as well as individuals in town who aren't that computer savvy to do a Venmo or anything like that. So Tom O'Barron has a check for the Miller family for $5,000 today. I believe there will be $7,000, including Franklin, Frank Oliver's Franklin Steakhouse 2,000, so that's 7,000 today. Anything more that we can do to help, we would be more than happy to do, and all of our hearts and our prayers are with P.O. Miller, with Mark, and we really hope that the fact that this community is so focused on making our town the best town it can be, a wonderful thing. So I know you're going through hell, but we're here for you.
Brian, can you come out again, please? Hold on a second.
I'm in between. Thank God, they short people, perfect. What can I say? Staying up there?
I'm gonna ask the Miller family, Mark's dad, to come up and say a few words.
She did? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, they, oh, yes, Lila, and that was my one from California.
You can take, you can take the whole night off.
Gotta come back there now. Food's good. I'll see you.
I won't take up much time. I just wanted to thank everybody and... No, seriously, thank, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm a retired cop myself, and the love and support that he got from the law enforcement community from Roseland, it's, it just actually blew me and my family away, and Mark very much needed this support. I really lose what I wanna say or something. But thank you so much. I mean, that's what I'm just trying to say, from the bottom of my heart, Mark's heart, our families' hearts, I mean, the outpouring that we have felt and seen from you guys is just, it's unbelievable. I've never, I've been a cop 30 years, I've never seen this much love in my career, and I'm glad it's just from my son, and from the bottom of my heart, from the director on down to all ears and every citizen in this town, thank you so much. Thank you.
Hopefully, the next time Mr. Miller comes, he can bring Mark with him.
Yeah.
I moved the agenda around a little bit, I apologize. First on the agenda, we'll have our first round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon, and if you're with us telephonically, press star nine. Thank you, Brian, good seeing you.
Thank you. Good night.
But they do have one and none. There's one and none. Nothing, right? Thank you.
Used to be one of my hangouts.
First on the agenda, we have introduction of ordinances. We have ordinance 26. Give it, save it for... Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Bye. Night.
I should have given people time to file out, I apologize.
Be safe. Bye. Ooh, this big one. I'm ready.
Thank you. If you can get me the information, we'll put it on Newsline.
I have a print, I have the digital version.
You have it.
I'll email it. Brian, didn't I send you the digital?
I signed up already. I'm coming. Okay, I have a baby shower in the afternoon to go to, but I'll be there for at least an hour.
Give Leo a kiss.
Bye-bye, thank you.
I will.
Thank you. First, we have introduction of ordinance 26-2025. Kennedy, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance by the mayor and council amending the Borough of Roseland Code of Ordnances to repeal Chapter 22, to adopt a new Chapter 22, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a flood plain administrator, flood, flood plain manager, and providing for severability and an effective date.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 26-2025? Parati, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance 26 will be posted on the borough's website, and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. The public hearing will be held Tuesday, September 16, 2025.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 27-2025. Ms. Kennedy, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend Section 10-2 of the Revised, Revised General Ordances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Certificate of Occupancy to remove the requirement for fire extinguishers to be installed in one and two family dwellings in accordance with New Jersey State statute.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 27-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance 27 will be posted on the borough's website, and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 16, 2025.
Next on the agenda is ordinance 28-2025. Ms. Kennedy, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of water meters and related equipment for the water-sour utility in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $400,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $400,000 bonds or notes of the borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 28-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Brant Toly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance 28-2025 will be posted on the borough's website, and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 16, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Next is ordinance 29-2025. For introduction, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $105,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $76,000 in bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 29-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Parati Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance 29 will be posted on the borough's website, and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 16, 2025.
Next is the introduction of ordinance 30-2025. Ms. Kennedy, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water and sewer utility in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $2,467,600 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,467,600 bonds or notes of the borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 30-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Brant Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none.
Ordinance 30 will, 30-2025 will be posted on the borough's website, and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. The public hearing will be held Tuesday, September 16, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Next is the introduction of ordinance 31-2025. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend the Revised General Ordances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter 14, entitled Parks and Recreation, to amend the outfield banner sponsorship fee.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 31-2025?
Motion? Second.
Toly, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance 31-2025 will be posted on the borough's website, and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 16, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Next is introduction of ordinance 32-2025. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the Borough Code to amend Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-24.2, composition of the police department.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 32-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance 32-2025 will be posted on the borough's website, and the notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 16, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Next is a public hearing on ordinance 24-2025. Ms. Kennedy, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland to repeal ordinance number 44-2024 as amended, which provided for salaries and compensation to be paid to non-union employees of the Borough of Roseland and substitute therefore salaries and compensation for the year 2025.
Do you have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 24-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Brant Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 24-2025? Hearing and seeing none may have a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 24-2025.
So moved.
Second.
Toly Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Kennedy, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland to repeal ordinance number 44-2024 as amended, which provided for salaries and compensation to be paid to non-union employees of the Borough of Roseland and substitute therefore salaries and compensation for the year 2025.
Do you have a motion to adopt ordinance 24-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Brant Toly, roll call vote, please, Ms. Kennedy.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toly?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Trillo? Ordinance 24-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on ordinance 25-2025. Ms. Kennedy, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland establishing salaries for the mayor and council of the Borough of Roseland.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 25-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Brant Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 25-2025? Hearing and seeing none may have a motion to close the public hearing on 20, ordinance 25-2025.
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Kennedy, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland establishing salaries for the mayor and council of the Borough of Roseland.
Do you have a motion to adopt ordinance 25-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Brant, roll call vote, please, Ms. Kennedy.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toly?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo? Ordinance 2025, 25-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Next, we have Resolution 269-2025 approving the August 27 bill list. Everyone receive the bill list for questions, concerns, and/or recusals. If there are none from the council, we'll take a motion to approve the bill list.
Motion?
Second.
Toly, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, we have adoption of resolutions, 1 through 28. I have 1 through 23.
I have 20. There's three red ones.
It's 28.
21 through 28, excuse me, by, by agenda number, by resolution number 270-2025 through 297-2025. Questions, concerns, comments, or recusals from these resolutions? If there are none, take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Brant, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, we have two items on our consent agenda. Approval of Raffa licenses for the HSA and for St. Nicholas Constantine and Helen Greek Orthodox Church. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Schroder, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, the mayor's report. I do not have a lot to add. I just wanna thank Roseland Police Foundation, everyone that was involved with National Night Out. We have some great stuff coming up in the fall, which we'll report in the September meeting, but we don't have a September televised meeting before our last concert of the year, which is the first Friday in September, and I also wanna publicly thank everyone that's been involved with the mayor's ball. It's a great cause, it's gonna benefit the police foundation that was just here, to boot the recreational boosters and the historical society. From there, I'll move on to committee reports, finance, administration, councilman Barty.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing new to report tonight. Hope everyone's enjoying the summer. Just I'd like to thank the Roseland Police Foundation and our first responders and everyone that's done all the great work for Officer Miller. It's been really been a great testament to the community here in Roseland, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Councilman Barty, Councilman Schroder, Councilman Trillo's not here, anything to add from recreation?
I have nothing additional to add.
Same here. Councilman Barty?
Nope, same here, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schroder?
Nothing additional to add.
Thank you. Councilman Brant?
A couple of quick engineering and DPW updates. Beginning August 18, concrete work and the beginning of paving on Godfrey, Lyons, Gates, Mitchell, and Plymouth will be taking place. The Cooperav Water Main Project is now ongoing, and the county is doing the culvert project on Condit Court. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna thank everyone again, like everyone else, for National Night Out. It was a tremendous extent, tremendous success, and I wanna extend my gratitude to the Roseland Police Foundation, all our first responders, the way that they, they support our community, it's just amazing, and we saw that tonight. A special thank you goes to the Norc Mounted Police. I love, the kids love seeing the horses, so do I. That was a great addition. I don't think they were here last year because of the torrential rains, so... of the torrential rains. So I also wanna thank the vendors who were here. Um, I'm glad that Officer Miller's dad was here to give us such a positive update on Mark's condition. On behalf of myself and the council, I wanna thank the Franklin Steakhouse for their event as well as Jersey Mike's and manager Matt Bowen. Um, he came up with this idea. He's such a, such a huge supporter of our community. Um, a special thank you goes out to him. I also, last week I provided some statistics, um, for the LPR readers that we have. I wanna provide an additional update. I failed to report on the corresponding statistics of our officers' work. So based on the LPR readers that we have in town, they're great for, for us, but we also need the police due diligence, their diligence to, to take care of it. So year to date for July, we've had 1,354 traffic summonses that were issued compared to last year of 1,280. Um, our officers have patrolled year to date, 139,351 miles of the town, which is up from last year where they only patrolled 91,000. So these numbers definitely reflect the dedication and hard work of our police department and keeping our community safe. So they correspond to the, you know, with the LPR readers. We need both to keep the community safe. We also had a speed study done. The council approved a speed study for Lincoln. That was done, uh, by our borough engineers. The, the results were shared with the police department and our traffic bureau so they could develop a comprehensive enforcement plan for overweight vehicles and volume, sheer volume. And shortly after that report was given to the police department, a summons was issued for an oversized truck of 80,000 pounds. So that just goes to show that enforcement does work. So hopefully that truck driver will never go down Lincoln Street again based on the ticket he received. So I just wanted to give you some additional statistics, um, that I spoke about last week and I, I failed to mention our police officers. So I just wanted to clarify some of that.
Thank you, Councilman.
And that's all.
Councilman Toley?
Uh, nothing to report right now. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add to committee reports? Hearing none. Next on our agenda is approval of our July 17th council meeting and executive session minutes with Councilman Barant accusing himself. Everyone received the minutes for review. And if there are no concerns, take a motion to approve these minutes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Parati Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, we have our second round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us telephonically, press star nine. And if you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. Thank you, Ryan. Uh, the governing body will have to close to go to executive session, discuss further attorney-client privilege matters. The public should know that the governing body will not take any formal action when we return from into regular session. We'll simply take a motion for adjournment. That being said, do we have a motion to close to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Barant Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your summer.
Yeah. I was shocked. Oh, what? And we're short. We're short.
We're short, what?
All right, Chris, I would, I would think I'm gonna go back to the phone for you so you can hear better, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, and, and you know what? I forgot to, to the, um, the amount of cases closed.